Hearing is for Council Order 2023-010, utility grant of location, National Grid Gas, Center Street and Gale Street, I'm sorry, Garfield Street. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to please come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like to support or have opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. Seeing no further public, oh, sorry, anybody? Sorry about that. Seeing not further public comment, I'll close this public hearing at 6:31. We'll be back in four minutes for the next public hearing. Welcome back again. Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, March 20th, 6:35 PM, public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2023-011, utility grant of location Comcast 147 C Avenue. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name or address. If you do not wish to speak or would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber.
Good evening. Dave Walling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, moving Massachusetts. I would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition to place an underground conduit on C Avenue, one three-inch PVC conduit, 42 feet, for the purpose of providing service to the MWRA located at 147 C Avenue.
Thank you very much. Especially if being underneath, you don't have to worry about gale winds. So please, please state your name and... Hello, Ed DeSanto, representing 143 CF, which is the residence next to the area in question. The concern we have is one. The extension of that line is pretty, pretty far. It goes all the way to the end of the peninsula, pretty much to get to the headquarters. Right now, the last Comcast connection is actually at 137, underground to 143. We did ask for underground permission, both as to electrical and Comcast going under the street. And we're advised by a matter of policy of the city of Quincy that from this point, we do not allow underground cables through the street. I don't know if you know that, but that's what we were told at the time we were pulling the permits to construct 143 CF. So there is the question, does that policy matter? If it doesn't, understood, but it would be good to know what the precedent is for underground versus not. Otherwise, the cable could be installed all the way aerial, which leads to the second concern that we have is, I don't know if you know this, but when you live on a peninsula, sometimes your connections aren't the greatest. And then the more you extend a crib that serves an area, you're drawing on the capacity of it. So the question I would have is, is the capacity for the extra use, and I don't, and we don't need to know what it is at the end, does it draw down and diminish the signal? Because people do rely on the signal for things like these hearings for the broadband that goes with it? Or is there a companion plan to keep it underground? Number three, the pole that's there since 2015, there's been a cable that's been wrapped around the base of pole and hanging there. And there used to be a broadband unit that used to send out wireless signal on that line. When I went to hook up 143 aerial, as I said, that stuff was still there. Some of it's been removed. But the question is, okay, what's going to be done to fix the line into the pole 19 where the riser will come down? So it's really not necessarily an objection, but it's a series of concerns. One of them being, they're concerned, what are the rules that apply to regular residents for the line? They all go in underground or are going to be denied as we were in another situation? Thank you for listening. Thanks. That's actually an excellent question. Is there, with National Grid, like to Comcast, I mean, sorry, like to speak to it?
Well, I can't really speak to any of the cable that's wrapped around the pole. Alls I can tell you is it's not Comcast. It's been quite a while since I've been out there, but it's definitely not us. And as far as, I think he said something about the signal. I mean, this is, we're bringing a fiber optic cable to the, to the MWRA. The existing coax that's in that area is more than sufficient for the services that are provided in that area now. I'd be happy to take his information and address any issues that he has.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Taking it out of, I don't know if I'll take it out of Committee Act. Sure, please do.
Just, just a quick comment. I'll work with Counselor Harris and take a good look at the situation with the pole. I'm the Ward One Counselor down there, so I'll, I'll take a look at the pole and the situation at 137 or 143, what the resident is talking about. And we'll, if we could leave it until we do a little due diligence. I'd appreciate it, Counselor.
Absolutely.
And then, and then come back and take care of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. That's the first. Anybody else would like to speak against or have any questions? Okay, so that, this particular item will not probably come out later on, later on this evening. So that being said, it is now 6:41. I'm going to close this grant of location of 147 C Avenue. And we'll be back in four minutes. Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Quincy City Council meet in Monday, March 20th, 2020. It is now 6:44 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
President.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor Devine.
President.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy.
President.
Counselor Phelan.
President.
President Dubonah.
Present.
Nine members.
We have nine members. We have a full quorum tonight. If, if you can stand, please do so at this time. If we can get a moment of silence and please use it as you wish. Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda.
First item is Father Bill's update.
I'd like to bring forward our President and CEO, John Yozwinski, and of Father Bill's in Mainspring, as well as Patrick Ronan, his colleague, former Patriot Ledger reporter, journalist. And was once up here for many city council meetings. Before I get started, John, and allow this to open up to yourself to give us an update of what's going on, I just want to thank you for all your hard work over the last few years of really putting something in place over there. And every day I'll drive by and see the development and it's coming along. So thank you. Also want to thank my colleague, Counselor Liang, for helping me out with having you here tonight. So with that, we're going to have a presentation from you. Counselors will have a little bit of PowerPoint. Allow the viewers at home to go along with some of the PowerPoint presentation. Then we'll open it up to questions for all the counselors here. John, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Dubonin. Thank you, Nina, for inviting us tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity. Well, it's a wonderful time for Father Bill's in Mainspring in the city of Quincy to see how we take care of our most vulnerable citizens. Just a brief, quick for people in the audience and some of the new city counselors, a quicker overview of our mission and the history, of course. Father Bill's in Mainspring in the city of Quincy started 1984. People in our community, faith community, started to see people not just asking for food, not just asking for a coat or how to pay the utilities, but were sleeping in the stairwells of our churches and in our community. And an interfaith group came together, like Sister Miriam, Pastor Wismar, and Father Bill McCarthy came together with so many great leaders in our community and, and city government and created the Quincy Interfaith Sheltering Coalition, now known as Father Bill's in Mainspring. So the city of Quincy has a great history of taking care of people of all levels of income and people that are struggling every day. And this is the next moment in time for the city of Quincy, I hope, and how we take care of each other. Father Bill's in Mainspring, though, is much different. Father Bill's place started, like I said, in the early 80s. We merged with a group out of the greater Brockton Community, Mainspring Coalition in 2007. And we serve the whole South Shore communities, about 41 communities. Tonight, Father Bill's in Mainspring will shelter over 134 families throughout the South Shore region, will shelter over 250 individuals. We will also, which has been my passion, I've been at Father Bill's. I started right out of college since 1996 in Quincy. Has been housing. And we have created and will support over 700 people into permanent supportive housing, families, individuals, and our veterans. When I first came to Father Bill's in 1996, 20% of the people that stayed at Father Bill's place were our veterans. 20%. 20% too many to stand in line, who fought for our freedom. And now we're down to about 8% that are, that are our veterans. Still 8% too many. And we will continue to commit to end veterans homelessness. But I just want to highlight, thank you for all of the Quincy support and the South Shore communities. And that's one of the groups that we've really targeted through the years also. Across the board, pre-COVID, we say that a lot now, just in the city of Quincy, for Father Bill's place, individual shelter for people 18 and over. We averaged about 130 individuals per night during the winter. This winter, we averaged around 147 individuals per night. On a particular cold nights, we got up to 175 people. That is something that everybody across the Commonwealth is seeing since COVID hit. We're seeing more individuals out on our streets. We're seeing more campsites. It's just been a combination of you're, you're going from a pandemic with inflation, cost of living. We've seen a tremendous rise of people 60 and over. We've seen over, our population has doubled for elderly people, fixed incomes and disabled coming into places like Father Bill's. So we're continuing to see those challenges as we move forward. More people struggling, of course, with mental health and opiates and substance use also. Unsheltered count, though, we've always prided ourselves in the city of Quincy and the South Shore. We don't have a large unsheltered population. And that's because Father Bill's operates a very low barrier, low threshold shelter. If somebody is struggling, maybe with substance abuse, mental health, or whatever, we don't close the door at the front door. We let people in. And so we don't have a lot of people sleeping outside. We do a point in time count through a whole country. And the fourth Wednesday of every January, we only had two people in the city of Quincy that were outside. We average probably, you know, five, six, seven, eight people any given night in the city of Quincy that are outside year round. But, you know, if you compare that to other communities, that's one of the best unsheltered numbers throughout the Commonwealth and out the country in a sense of a size of a city like city of Quincy. So having a low threshold shelter response and a great housing response leads to that quality in a vibrant community here. Families, you know, just to touch upon it briefly, just knowing that I think it's been, you know, it's very much involved in the press and in the shelter system is, you know, we've definitely seen across the Commonwealth since last spring, a huge uptick in families experiencing homelessness across the Commonwealth. Why is that happening? Well, you know what? We've seen it where, you know, with all the pandemic and a lot of the relief for prevention funding and foreclosure funding and some of that stuff has relented. So we're seeing more people fall into homelessness, especially a lot of single moms coming in. We've also seen a lot of people that are coming from other countries come in. So we've seen that uptick also. So, you know, you know, prior to the Baker administration, we were in the hotels across the Commonwealth. We had over 1,000 families in hotels. You know, Governor Baker did a great job of providing some housing. We got out of the hotels under the last administration. Before he left, we got back into it. We're over 600 families that are in hotels across the Commonwealth. Just at a point in time over the last week in the city of Quincy, we had 180 students in the Quincy Public School experiencing homelessness. 180 kids experiencing homelessness in the city of Quincy. We don't have shelters in the city. We, we need to continue to look at, we have shelters in the region, is how do we support more affordable housing for our poorest families and individuals through all the communities? It's not just the city of Quincy. It's all communities need to take on this responsibility. Those kids are getting bused from other shelters. If it's at Father Bill's, we have shelters in Stoughton. We have, we have shelters in Middleborough and Brockton throughout the region. Just, just so you know what's going on out there is we see more families experiencing homeless, homelessness also. So across the board, though, really can't say enough about how the city of Quincy supported Father Bill's in Mainspring through COVID. You know, the mayor and the city, with all of your help, we were able to depopulate our shelter with the South Shore Y. We had about a 32% infection rate of COVID. When it first hit, we were able to go to the Y while shut down. Then we'd been in some hotels. We got that infection rate down to 2%. And so the CARES Act money came in. We've been able to stay in hotels up and through this winter with state and federal and city money. So really thank you for all of you. We all saved lives together. So that's just kind of a high level. As you can see what you have in your PowerPoint, what I was really here tonight, just to give you a couple, a couple of brief moments, I know is the most exciting thing that we've got going on is, you know, we always know what the backdoor strategy is to end homelessness. It's housing. But what's the front door? Do we continue just to manage homelessness in large warehouse type dormitory settings? Or can we do better? And thankfully, we've really looked at the data and the years that we've been doing this, sad to say, over 30 years. And we're excited to say that we are going with a new model called the Housing Resource Center, the Yawkey Housing Resource Center. So what does that mean with a new model? What that means is thankfully, with the, with the great partnership of the city of Quincy, we've been, we've been able to generate a new delivery model. What you're going to see now on 39 Broad Street that's being built right now is two facilities. You're going to have a new housing resource center that is, that's going to replace the Father Bill's shelter. And then you're also going to have 30 units of permanent supportive housing where people have leases. It's going to target that chronic homeless group, the people that struggle in our communities the most. So it's not geared for the person that just needs us for a few days. 70, 80% of the people that come to us just need us for a few days, a few weeks, a few months. This is targeted for the people that might be our customer for a long period of time. We've, that's our, that's where we can fit in to create the housing for people struggling with substance use, mental health, physical disabilities, fixed income people. This new facility, one of the things in the old facilities, we're only funded for nighttime services. This will be funded for 24 hours a day. We will offer daytime services, so we'll have a day center. We'll offer prevention services and diversion services. We'll have access to meeting rooms, technology. We're going to have Manit Health there as a licensed healthcare clinic. DPH has already approved it. So people can get healthcare immediately and not go to our emergency rooms. Where we are in both of these two facilities right now, our construction update and timeline is, is we are just looking at, for the Housing Resource Center and the housing, we're looking at a August opening. So we're excited about that. We, we were hoping for a spring timeline, but if anybody knows where the switch gears are in the world, please tell us. But we've had some, as everybody's faced in, in across the country and it is delays of product coming down, down the pipeline. But we're excited about this quality building. You know, I want to thank the city of Quincy, the mayor, the city council for a 99-year lease. This is city land. We wouldn't have been able to do it. This is a $25 to $26 million project. And when you go into your lenders and saying like, we don't own the property, then the only way it'll pull off is if you have a long-term lease at 99 years. So really thankful for the city there, you know, with that. How are we doing it funding-wise? So the Commonwealth amassed, thankfully, you know, like I said, we're right around a little over $25 million now. $13 million of that have come from the Department of Housing and Community Development and low-income housing tax credits. City of Quincy, of course, a great partner was ours. The land value was about $1.8 million for taking over the land across, that you guys all approved here across from Father Bill's place at 38 to 39. And then we've got some money out of the planning department for $250,000. And then Father Bill's in Mainspring, we had to raise over, close to $10 million to put our own money in from our donors, from private donors in our community, to corporations, to foundations. We did a capital campaign and everybody stepped up, which is just tremendous. It's the largest campaign we've ever done in our history. And I just can't say enough of how strong the South Shore community and the Quincy community has been for this, for this project. So we are absolutely ecstatic about this. And we're ecstatic just on the model. You know, this is a 26, well, it's going to be probably close to as the costs keep increasing, about a $26 million. We came in at 24 in the beginning. And we've really leveraged to the city of Quincy tremendous money here. You know, over 80% is coming from, from either the community, the private community, the state, and, and the feds. What a great model to say like, what a great model to show other communities that, you know what, when a city puts a little money in the game, you can leverage a lot more to come back and, and all be a part of it. So thank you for being part of that story. And thank you for taking care of everybody that is in need of our community so that we don't have a large number of people sleeping outside, like so many other South Shore communities have that are much smaller than us and other communities across the country that are about the same side of Quincy that are struggling with homelessness. So, you know, with that, of course, I want, I want to thank our, our counselor, Dave McCarthy, being a part of the project through it and, and going, going through all of that. Of course, want to thank Chris Walker for all the conversations through their years and the mayor. And I want to thank all of you. It's been a great project and welcome to answer any questions.
All right, I'd like to, we'll start with, I'd like to recognize Ward One Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. John, good evening. Pat. I know I've tried to get in a couple of times recently to take the, the tour. But what a transformation on Broad Street, led by Father Bill's and the move across the street. I know you're getting close and it's just, what a leap forward from, from the building you were in to this, you know, Housing Resource Center that'll have everything. You talk about the Manit. We talk about permanent housing in there. The options now are endless. So you've done a tremendous job. I'm still going to get with Pat and, and get my tour before it opens. But just a great job and, and a great move down on that Broad Street. I know you've worked with the administration a lot, but Broad Street was a, was a difficult, it's a difficult street. And now, you know, it'll be just a total makeover. Good for the businesses there, good for the police station, and good for Father Bill's. So congratulations, John and Pat, and thank you. And if you need anything, give me a yell. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And to know, of course, we'll, we'll be having a ribbon cutting in June. We haven't picked the date yet. We'll invite all of you. But we'd also, we'd do a separate tour just for the council members. If you'd like that, a more intimate tour to really see the building, know what's going to happen there and what we're going to do. Part of the things that we're going to do in this building, it's not about the building as much as what the services are going to be, right? We're going to have Bay State Community Services there. We're going to have Manit Health Center. We're going to have the Volunteers of America there. We're going to have the VA there. We're going to have other organizations be in this building to work with people to get them out. We're a broker of service at Father Bill's. So having a new facility where you can be there 24/7 so people that don't feel like they need to roam the community during the day. We're going to have a small little library area for people to be there so they don't go to the library here. Not to say that people still won't and they shouldn't, but just we're going to offer some, a safe place for people to go, to engage with them. And people that sleep outside, we're going to have the ability to give everybody a locker. They can come in for lunch. They can come in and take a shower. It's about all that progressive engagement. How do you work with somebody? And if somebody comes in right now at Father Bill's and, you know what? They've got a job, they're sitting there, sitting at Father Bill's, saving that first lasting security, staying for four or five months. This new model, we're going to have flexible dollars that are going to say to them, you've got an apartment and you've got a good job. We're talking to the landlord. They're going to take you. We're going to pay for that first lasting security so that we can recycle that bed. That's the whole thing is treat the emergency shelter like a medical emergency room. Recycle the beds, get people back into the community, back to where they want to be and support them. We'll provide stabilization in their homes. In our permanent supportive housing, the 700 units that we provide for people, you know, 93% of those people stay housed over three years. It's a successful model. It's not something that just started two years ago. We've been doing it for a long time, 15 to 20 years. So best practices is what's part of this. So we're very confident about this. But at the same time, we can't always deal with all the environmental challenges like a pandemic, inflation, this and that. We also need to be able to flex up to make sure in the winter we can accommodate everybody. Having a building twice the size of what Father Bill's is today will allow us to stay three, four, five feet distancing like we've learned with the pandemic was is healthy, but still make sure we take care of everybody and take everybody that is in need so they're not sleeping outside.
Thanks, John. I'd like to recognize Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, John. I just want to say first and foremost, thank you both, you and Pat, so much for your willingness to come here tonight and provide an update. You know, I feel like no news is good news, right? And in this case, I had this moment, I think I spoke to you about this, where, you know, I came across an article about some of the work that you guys are doing and some of the progress that you all are making. And I was like, well, I feel like we haven't heard much, you know, for a while since the pandemic. There've been a lot of other, albeit really important issues that have come up in the last couple of years. But I kind of felt like, well, wait a minute, what's, what's Father Bill's been up to? And just realizing and recognizing that, again, you all haven't skipped a beat. You haven't stopped in the midst of all of this, right? And I think it's important to understand that in addressing this, this, you know, essentially homelessness and all the other issues that you're talking about here, the cost of living, our mental health issues, right? Like substance abuse, many other things that we don't know about, of course, out of respect to the privacy of the clients that go in and out of Father Bill's. All of that being said, I think it's important to pause for a moment and just recognize that you all are making that work possible here in the city, right? To help folks here that we may not be hearing from because they have you as a resource. And that's tremendous. You are an incredible and true community partner to the work that we have up here to serve the residents. And so, you know, I think it's one thing to have you come up here and also educate us on what's going on. So just understanding the numbers that you provided to us, the facts you provided to us, to know that you're participating in that countrywide count, right, of, you know, how many homeless are out there? And then use that real data to then inform the work that you have done. That's really impressive. But again, it's important for us to be educated on that. And then obviously, education is one piece. But then what do you do with that education? And you are clearly proving that you are taking that, that information and producing real results by producing these services. And so just from the bottom of my heart, I don't have any questions. I wanted to take this opportunity to, again, educate us, educate folks out there in the city to know that there is this tremendous resource to thank you profusely for, for being real, true community partners. I guess the only question I really have is though, I did, I did have some folks who've reached out, just I think out of curiosity and, and, you know, that same passion to give back and to help. As you're here tonight, could you just let folks know that are interested in supporting you, whether financially and helping with your capital campaign? Congratulations, by the way. That's tremendous to raise $10 million on a capital campaign. But in any way, right, if folks tuning in or pay attention want to help and be helpful, what's the best and fastest way for them to get engaged and involved?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Nina. Yeah, so first, just to know, you're right. We, we, we really focus on data and we focus on like, what works? What doesn't work? And we calibrate. So to know you have a partner here, that really is all about like best practices, studying, learning from the rest of the country, but also knowing like, we are, we are learning and pushing ourselves to engage and not stick with one model because it's, we think it's the right way for 30 years. So thank you for that. So thank you for that. The other thing I would just say, and I know Jim is here from the planning department, is we have a great planning department in the city of Quincy. And the stuff that we've been able to do and leverage from the feds, like HUD, like city Quincy, our continuum of care in the Plymouth County, Norfolk County, and the city's been the lead on that. We score, one of the highest scores in the country because of like Father Bills. Honestly, in the city of Quincy, we've always been lockstep on like, let's focus on housing. Let's focus on, you know, let's end homelessness, let's not manage homelessness. So just for you guys all to know, like, your planning department is well aware of and is very savvy with like, how do we invest the dollars that are coming to this region together, which is like political will, right? We're not going to do this without political will. So always help us keep the political will we have. If we do not have it, we will have more people struggling outside in our communities. And then how can people help us, Nina? Absolutely, we're about $200,000 short of the $10 million. So if anybody has some money, would like to learn more about it, please go to our website, learn more about it and talk to Pat and I. We'd love to see how people can help us get to that ultimate goal. And then, and then we have wish lists on our website, you know, towels, you know, sheets, some of the basics. The other thing is, is like, because of COVID, we rely on volunteerism. We rely on meals coming to our car shelters. As we open the Housing Resource Center, we need the volunteers to come back. And I know, you know, in a sense of COVID and all of that, we didn't want volunteer. We were trying to be, you know, keep everybody safe. But we need people to come back. So we need volunteerism because we don't want, we, we need to have those in-kind support there so we're not spending that money on those other items. So hope people can check out our website, look at our wish list all year round. But towels and sheets, brand new, are the biggest ones that, that, that we need and come back and volunteer and provide food, so.
Right, and what's your website? Can you just say for folks? It's in front of us on the PowerPoint.
Yep, www helpfbms.org.
Great, and the other thing I just want to say too is that, and this is really important, we have talked extensively, I remember you had always been really proactive in reaching out to us as well just to ask, again, with the sort of data mindset you have of like, what are you hearing from your constituents? What are you, you know, hearing for needs and wants? And one of the things that I think you were really passionate about was, again, connecting, essentially, you know, how do you make Father Bills not just a place where somebody can rest their head at night and be safe, but really, what can we do, again, to your point, to end homelessness, right, to really set folks up for success, whether it's job training, job hunting, resume writing, I mean, like from soup to nuts. You just, you want it to be a one-stop shop for folks. And I think it's just absolutely incredible to look and see that you are making this a reality, John. And so really, to you, to Pat, to your team, like, congratulations, right? This is, this is amazing to, to have come this far, right? Where you're sitting down and you have a concept in place and then to really put to work everything you need to do on your end to make it happen. I mean, it's a tremendous, tremendous success. And I just want to, again, really from the bottom of my heart, congratulate you for that. So thank you for updating us and educating us on what you all are providing, what we can anticipate for a timeline. I'm really excited to see, you know, the doors open really and to see what we can do to continue to support. So thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Nina. And then just one last thing is to know, like, we, you know, we're so excited about doing a 30-unit new permanent housing for 0% to 30% median income, our poorest homeless neighbors. But let's be honest, we need to continue to have resources and housing in the pipeline for that population. We need a mixed income strategy. So let's, so, you know, in a sense of as we work with our developers, as we work with Father Bills in Mainspring or other groups, we've got to also, we'll continue to share that, the 700 units, they're in Weymouth, they're in Braintree, they're in Quincy, they're in Brockton, they're in Plymouth, they're in Hingham, they're in Hall, they're in Randolph. But we've got to continue to look at opportunities where we can provide for our poorest neighbors, opportunities of low, of low-income housing here in the city too. So thank you.
I'd like to recognize councillor Mahoney.
Thank you very much. This presentation is awesome and I'm very excited to see that we're going to be having some of the resources that you're going to be bringing to Quincy. It's, it's, it's been long needed for a long time. I remember back in 2011, I was discussing a very similar plan that was happening in other parts of the country. And when we were talking about our downtown redevelopment, I was saying that this is something that we have to deal with now because it's not going to go away, it's only going to get worse because as we develop the city and we put in these new incredible units that have been coming in, it's going to put a stronghold on a lot of other people as we, and we have seen that throughout the years. We've seen things happen and, you know, sometimes when people think of homelessness, they're thinking of, you know, unfortunately, we think of unfortunate people that have had addiction problems or different issues throughout their whole life. But these are people who sometimes are actually making a pretty good living, believe it or not, but can't afford to live in their communities. And when you mention those families, my heart just breaks because I happen to know some of those families, some people who I've known affected through corporate jobs that were laid off, families with three kids, single mothers that were making a pretty good living. On paper, one might think they're making a pretty good living, but that pretty good living doesn't go very far when you don't have the income coming in. And before you know it, it doesn't take long for that single mom with those three kids to be threatened to be homeless. And thank God for the fact that the federal government did come in and help. But I actually knew one family that was at the very end of fingertips, holding on to the, to the window sill to say before they were going to be losing their housing. And that's happening all over, that's happening all over the country. It's also happening all over our state and also with, with people's jobs being, you know, as much as the market's really good out there, it's also, there's layoffs happening at the same time. So these things are happening outside of Quincy, they're happening all over. So when you're talking about those families and some of those Quincy public schools, I guess, I just was wondering, how many of those permanent supported housings are, is there for families? How many, what's the breakout of those 30 permanent housing units?
Yeah, no, great question. So for Father Bills in Mainspring, it's, we probably, of the, of the 700 units, it's probably about 60 family units, so it's, it's not a big portion of it. And that's, you're right, that's the difficulty of making it work with the public funding, per, per unit costs, making it work with some of the community support that you get. So it is a systemic issue, it's a, it's a capital funding issue bigger than what we can solve today. And we need the bigger developers to solve that. Father Bills in Mainspring isn't going to be able to solve that in a sense. And, and part of it is too, is like, when somebody maybe experiences a housing crisis as a single individual, they can call Father Bills, they can come down to the shelter, they can call us for prevention. The family system is so prescribed to go through the state. You have to go to the DTA office, you have to be eligible. It's, it's, it's a different system that we can't, but now, so we don't get involved until the state calls us. But to know, like, every night, we get calls from families, members, you know, church groups, interfaith groups, whatever.
It's too bad we can't fix that because it's very archaic.
We put people up until they become eligible or if they don't. And so we're not allowing people to sleep in cars, but at the same time, it's, it's, it's a different system of a response. And so it's been hard for us to say like, how can we get involved? Besides, we'll continue to add more shelter units. We are adding more shelter units. We're putting another 30 shelter units because we know the family shelter system is growing. More families across the Commonwealth need our help. But the housing, you know, it's, it's a little bit beyond our capacity to think about developing more family housing. We need the bigger developers to handle.
And we talked about that the other night when I saw you. And the thing is, is that, I guess the reason why I bring that up is it's, it's twofold, right? We do have to have, we have to have an understanding of what, what our capabilities are within our profits and then also what our capabilities are with our city, with what we have for our own community. When we're talking about the community of, of family homelessness and then working with those developers, because many times they get a pass to be able to put it into a fund. And then the fund takes forever because there's no land to do it. So it's kind of a catch-22. So your need is now, but, you know, developers get to have an option of passing it through. That option shouldn't be allowed anymore. And then the other problem is, is when we call it affordable, is it truly affordable? That's the, that's the real dilemma that we're in, the formula that needs to be, to be really looked at when we're doing these things. But I do appreciate that because it's something that we really need to focus on because oftentimes people really do think that when we're talking about somebody who's homeless, it's, 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 it's always thought of, the percentage of the people are, are in a different situation than, than some people are. But sometimes it's, it's, it's your neighbor. You just didn't see them falling off the cliff. The other thing I want to talk about is, and I, and truly the day center and the services and the shelter, everything being together underneath one roof. I mean, it is, it is what we've needed for a long time here in Quincy, so I applaud that. So there's two questions I want to ask. One is about the finances, if we could go back. I heard you speak about that, I just, I just didn't get my notes taken down correctly and I can go watch the tape, but, because you're here. $10 million is from your capital plan and you said that you received some money from the development, from planning, I think you said, and then also from federal and state. Could you break out what the, how you got your $26 million approximately, just?
Yeah, so the Commonwealth was about $13 million.
Yep.
Right, and then we got the, we've got Affordable Housing Trust for a million. And then we've raised about $10 million. Housing Choice was $250. And then the land value is of course a part of the equation as that was an in-kind from the city of Quincy, which is tremendous there, so.
And what was the land value, just so I, do we, do we have that? Just curious.
1.8 million.
1.8 million. And I do appreciate the fact that you mentioned the 99-year lease. And I want to mention that this is the difference here between other 99-year leases that are being discussed is that's commercial and there's, there's income being made at the, you're not an income-making property, you are a nonprofit. That 99-year lease is necessary for you to be able to go out and even get the HUD funding, all of the other things that you're having. I just want to clarify that because some people at home might say, oh my God, 99-year lease, we're talking about another one. Is that really what we're talking about? No, we're talking about a nonprofit, we're talking about a social, emotional need for our community to make sure that we are, we are providing for people who are the highest need in our community. And it's what you do the best at, by the bill. So I want to appreciate.
Yeah, the 90, you know, we, we of course, we're in constant conversations with the city and the mayor about it. We were open to like, okay, do we need to acquire it or if we can't? And, you know, knowing what the city had going on, a lease was fine with us, but knowing, it, it was the funders, it was, it was the public funders that said, all right, if, if we're going to put that kind of money, it had to be a 99-year lease. That was just standard protocol. And that's pretty typical in land deals with affordable housing projects or shelter projects.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that just because it's, it's a sensitive subject, but at the same time, I just wanted to mention that as well. And then also when we, when you're looking at some of the services, when you say you partner with the Services for Behavioral Health Addiction Recovery, so you, so traditionally you always had, what were the services you traditionally always had at Father Bills? And what are the services that you're going to be having at Father Bills? Like, did you always have AA meetings at Father Bills or is that something? So AA meetings were always at Father Bills and you will continue to have Alcoholics Anonymous at Father Bills? And what are some of the other, some of the other services you might be having over there? Just so we can have an understanding of that.
Yeah, so, yeah, of course, Father Bills has always had AA and NA meetings at, at the shelter. Of course, we'll continue to have those. We've, you know, what we're going to be able to provide in this new, new facility though is really have a ability, because it's a larger ability, to welcome outside nonprofits, social services, state agencies to come in and engage with our guests at the shelter, you know? So if people have head injuries, if people have mental health, they have substance use, those groups are going to be able to come in and engage. We're going to have daytime services. We've never had daytime engagement services. So that's the game changer here is to have people not roam in the community, but stay in and be able to meet with people. And it could be our, our caseworkers, but it could be other, other organizations. And, and people are running to say, I, I want to be a part of this. So, you know, we've got a great network, if it's, you know, Bay State Community Services, Interfaith, QCAP, you know, Manit Community Health, also regional groups. They're, they're, everybody's excited about this. This is, this is innovative, this is bold, we hope it works, let's be honest. But people want to be a part of this and, and that's good where we can have a facility that will be able to offer more to the people that come into our building. Elder services coming into the building, all of those things.
Yeah, I think, I think the key there too is, and I think, I do think it's going to work. I don't think you have to worry. I really truly, because, because it creates a safe haven for people that feel like, if they're, before, the issue was when people left Father Bills and this, obviously, like you say, roaming. They had places they were supposed to go to, but they may not get there because they had to, they had to get there and it was hard to get there. And sometimes as you get close to where you need to go and you're having some problems, you kind of get distracted and think, or I don't feel up to going today. Where if you're in a situation where it's a housing situation and you feel comfortable in that situation, you'll be encouraged to go. And if you're having a bad day, maybe you don't have to do that, but you could do this. There's options for them. And I think that's really the, that's really part of what I learnt when I was learning about the, the tragedies of homelessness and some of the issues that people run into. And it's not always, again, it's not always addiction. Sometimes it's financial, it's being able to learn how to be able to balance things or what you can do to get out of that hole that was created because you, whatever circumstances got you there. So I just wanted to thank you so very much and it, you know, it's, some people will say it's so big. I'm like, maybe it should have been bigger, I don't know. I just, it's, it's, it's never going to be big enough, but the, but what you're going to be able to hopefully change is people's lives for the positive. And, you know, it's, it's something that we have here and it's definitely a need. I do hear from people here in the city of Quincy and I'm often on the, I'm often referring them back, you know, talking to Mr. Fabrizio and then referring back and forth between people. We do have great resources. Another thing that I think would be great, and you mentioned it to me again, that maybe we could have a charrette of maybe some of all of the nonprofits because you all work so well together and really talk about some of the, 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 the abilities that we have to work here in the city of Quincy and how we can work together. And then maybe even invite some of those developers to realize that, you know, this is a community that we, that we want to be able to fix everything in and they can be a part of that solution as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann.
John, thank you for getting through the 2020 March COVID-19 pandemic. I know back in that timeframe, you know, you had to use the local hotels, you had to use the Quincy YMCA and you pieced it together. I had visited and you, it was very tight quarters inside the Father Bills facility and it was, it was a very difficult time across here. We've just hit the three-year mark of that entire situation. I was looking, yesterday was a cold day and it looks like the weather's breaking now. Are we looking in for good times of, of weather and not having it really under, under 32 degrees out there? And looking forward to the first day of spring being today. Some of the things, I obviously have visited the, back in October on my day job. Thank you for bringing me around with Pat as well. I see as every day I drive by there, I see more and more construction being done. Like, I see the siding coming up. I know you have a photo up there in the green, but that has now become some type of gray bluish siding, which looks beautiful. And every day you go by and you see it re-transformed. So August looks like the date for it. I know when I spoke with you some time ago, and I also talked with Joe Shea from Granite City Partners, that was here a couple of months ago about the transformation of that particular area with the police station, public safety headquarters, is I talked to you about the back access Field Street and how they put the retaining wall and they're going to have, folks will have access, whether you're walking or actually vehicles going through that back access. Can you talk a little bit about how important that is that instead of coming back on Broad, what you kind of talked to me about when I, when I spoke with you a couple of months ago?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's huge for our staff, right? It's like, you know, in a sense of, I mean, we've, the C Street, we've already started to utilize it. So just in a sense of getting a lot of the traffic off that street, knowing that a lot of our guests are using Broad Street and it's a safety concern and, you know, so anything we can do to provide more safety and with the sidewalks and the lighting and all of that. As much transportation as we can go to go off of the backside of that is only going to help with our, our guests where we've got so many elderly people, disabled people, people coming down Broad Street. So it's definitely going to hopefully help with the congestion and the safety concerns of coming off of Broad Street onto the Southern Artery. So, you know, kudos to the city and the architects that kind of planned that, on that place out there. So that's, that's a huge win for all of us, especially the people knowing it's a busy street. Right now, it's a busy street going forward with, with a lot of activity. And knowing that we're serving a lot of vulnerable people on that street going forward, having the majority of the vehicles hopefully go off of the other lot is only going to improve the, the safety for everybody.
I spoke a lot about, about the safety, safety measures across that particular area, obviously with Joe Shea of Granite City Partners. And he's going to put some more signage up there to allow folks to get onto the crosswalks. Unfortunately, we've had a couple fatalities over the last year, over the last year, weather conditions raining or if it's snowing. And if we could work together and we could work here at the council to get the word out, you know, to use the, the crosswalks as well as use it down on Field Street, just to help out with folks. Also, the McDonald's is under reconstruction right now and that won't be open until July. So you get the new McDonald's that will be coming in, in July, and obviously you will be in August. And you can see the transformation of that particular area. And one of the biggest things, we're also going to work on traffic. And also the, the whole entire area needs to be a little bit redesigned. So I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. We're working together. I know a few years ago, we had all the councils in there at some point. And I love your new model. I think it's going to work. I think it's a great new tweak to the system. And, and you're, we're willing to work together to, to make things happen. And thank you for your team to come out today. And we look forward to continuing to press on here in the spring. So thank you, John, for coming in tonight. You've really been a great help and a partner here in City of Quincy. I want to give another shout out to Jim Fatsis because the Quincy Housing, Quincy Affordable Housing Trust gave you a million dollars.
Yeah.
And I know a lot of folks come to me about affordable housing, affordable housing. I know a predecessor in Ward Four, Council Prime Palmucci, would always talk about affordable housing, which we's on the trust. So very happy to that one million dollar-
Yeah. And I hope you guys know the imprint you make because like when we were in, developing a project in Randolph recently, and we were developing a project, we're trying to do a project in Stoughton right now, is, you know, people call over to other communities and say, you know, they check on our, you know, what, what we're doing is, you know, and then they check on the resources that are given. And not saying that all those communities have the resources that a Quincy has or a Brockton or Plymouth have, but what they look at like, okay, because other communities have other resources, they say you got to put a little bit of money in. So thank you for the support because it just helps us develop housing for people experiencing homelessness in other communities as they look at Quincy as a model. And to get the Affordable Housing Trust is tremendous. I mean, that exactly, it's a million dollars is a huge award for us. And for, when the state heard that given 13, they're like, this community, or when the city's like, we're going to give you, you know, basically free land to, to move across the street. Like, that's huge. That's huge. And, and thank you. Because we wouldn't be able to do, do this project without that. So-
Appreciate you, John.
Thank you for partnerships.
Is there anything that Pat wants to say? I know he spent a lot of time in this chambers. I think he went to sit back there and just relax, but-[637.32][637.32](laughter)
I'm going to stay and take notes and file a report.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, you guys. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2023-029, an order acceptance of Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to cost of living COLA adjustments for retirees.
I'd like to recognize Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree, make a motion to accept this order, 2023-029. This was a, something the governor signed at the end of 2022 into law and requires the local establishment such as the mayor and the council to approve. So I'd like to just make that in the form of a motion.
Motion made by Counselor McCarthy to approve the COLA, seconded by Counselor Harris. Any discussion on this motion? You have the floor. I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney.
Sorry, to cause you some confusion. Just a question. I, I believe our base, our COLA base, does anybody know what our COLA base is in Quincy? Or is it, that's a state standard? Do we know?
Fifteen thousand.
Is it fifteen thousand? I thought it was, I was told by, by, by Mr. Kroll, I forget what his, I forget what his title is over the retirement board. That was thirteen thousand. Director, Director of the Retirement Board is thirteen thousand. Is it thirteen thousand?
I believe it's fifteen thousand. You, the council voted on a COLA, COLA base increase a few years ago, and it was a three-year tier. So I believe it went thirteen to thirteen, then the following year to fourteen, and I believe the following year to fifteen.
I just think it's important for people to know at home that we're not, this is, and I'm just going to try to do the math quick because I did the math for thirteen thousand, but it's, it's, we're talking about a $62 increase in retirement. It's, and I'm not voting against this. I just think it's important for people to know. But sometimes when people see this, they, they don't know what it means. And also, Social Security on the other side is also having an increase as well. I think it's already gone into effect for Social Security, but I just, I just wanted to mention the math. But thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thanks.
So just for clarification, what the, Madam Auditor and Counselor Mahoney are kind of talking about is there is a $15,000 cap on the retirement COLA.
Correct.
And it is at 5%, which is-
It will be if, if the council, the mayor has approved it. So now it comes to the council for approval. Once the council votes, then it will go up to 5% of that $15,000. And I believe, I believe it might come to roughly maybe $300 a retiree.
$300 per retiree, is it? And so what's the total amount that they can collect? $750?
No, it's only, it will be up to, it will be of the $15,000. They only get it up to, for the $15,000. So come to about $300, I believe.
Okay. Just for clarification, any other counselors? So motion made by Counselor McCarthy, seconded by Counselor Harris. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Stay.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2023-030, a resolve seeking a citywide review-
I'd like to recognize Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to first and foremost just extend my gratitude to Director Fatsis of the Planning Board, as well as our Clerk of Committees, Jen, and the mayor's office in talking me through this. So I had for a while wanted to think about creating a residential tax exemption here in Quincy for folks who live in their home and, you know, realist, and, and God bless Colleen in the Assessor's Office for like talking me through years and years of how doing that here in Quincy is not possible because we just simply don't have a strong enough commercial base to offset the residential base. And what I'm talking about here essentially is that when we are looking at our tax dollars and how that funds the city's budget, 85% of that comes from residential, our residential base versus commercial. And so it's a matter of, okay, if we can't do that, then let's get really creative on what we can do. And it's really about, for me, pushing towards increasing opportunities for commercial development. And that's such a big conversation to unpack. And again, Director Fatsis has entertained a lot of conversations about how we can move that along. And what I've come to find is that in the past, this is way back in, you know, 1968, 1970, the city had actually done, you know, citywide study essentially, and went to all the different communities and found what works best in different parts of the city, what can be built there, and then essentially use that to dictate a, a citywide zoning code. And that was in 1970. And since then, there have been, you know, a couple hundred iterations of changes, sort of one-off, you know, amendments that have been made over the years. And I just think now, given, you know, my personal sort of want, want to push an increase for commercial development, but really also just a combination of conversations from folks about priority for mobilization, access to public transit, more affordable housing opportunities, where density is in certain parts of the city, flooding concerns. I mean, you name it, right? It all comes back to, I think, how we're building in the city as a whole and how that then impacts other developments that happen across the city. And so really just starting from a place where first, again, we should collect data and do research and figure out where we are. And then from there, use that to inform if we should change any of the zoning across the city, and if we are to change it, what that would look like. But really on, on an entire scale of looking at it essentially as a whole picture. And so I know, I know my colleagues, Counselor McCarthy included, over the years, have really been passionate about, again, looking at it from this point of view, right? And thinking about smart development and what that really means. And so this resolve is a first step in that process, right? Just getting us all to a point where we can just collect data, collect information about where things currently stand. And then from there, use that to inform a next step about, again, what do we really want to see happen in the city as far as, you know, development, but really smart development goes moving forward. And so again, the last time that happened is 1970, over, you know, 50 years ago. And so why not now, right? And hopefully this will inform smart and effective impactful development for the next 50 years or beyond. So I'm grateful to my colleagues who've supported this. Again, shout out to Director Fatsis and to the Clerk of Committees for giving me all the information to educate myself about this resolve and this step. And I just, Mr. President, I'd like to motion to approve and to move to ordinance committing.
So motion made by Counselor Liang to approval and to put it into ordinance, to have a second, seconded by Counsel McCarthy.
Seconded and on the motion.
And on the motion. You have the floor. Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm going to commend Counselor Liang for bringing it up again. I, you know, the wards are so different. Counselor Harris and myself have peninsulas, the majority of, of which is Res A. We have, you know, different options sprinkled in. But, you know, Ward Four, Ward Two, you know, a lot of commercial, a lot more difficult to go through. And I know that I've been up to see Mr. Fatsis. He always enjoys me coming up to talk zoning. But to try to figure it out without hurting, you know, those, those residents and those people that have bought something in that zone for a particular reason, that want to do something with it down the road, and trying to figure out how to control that so it won't hurt the neighborhood. So I, I'm all for this. I'm taking a good look. I, I'd always think that the ward counselors, you know, would have a, a grip on this a little bit in, in regards to the areas in their, their wards that always probably turn into those problem areas where a development would pop up, you know? And they, they know when, when that comes up, they know that somebody might have the option to go a little bit overboard. So, you know, that gets us into zoning and then that gets us into a discussion on, on what should fit in there. But I, I think we're overdue to, even if we looked at it, you know, the whole city, you know, you know, take, pulling the, the downtown pretty much out of it a little bit, but looking at the, at the wards, ward by ward, and having everybody's input involved, I think that's a good move. So I second it. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I'd like to recognize Counselor Andronico.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to commend my colleague Counselor Liang for putting this forward. Appreciate the, the work on the backend to make this happen. And I think it pairs well with the new implementation of the MBTA Housing Initiative, MBTA Community Housing Initiative. There are new rules that cities in those communities have to follow, Quincy being one of them. And moving forward, you know, one of the things that I keep hearing from constituents is, you know, this project doesn't belong in this particular neighborhood. And especially in Ward Two, a lot of our neighborhoods are Res B or commercial. There's a very tiny pocket of Res A within Ward Two. And oftentimes, as Counselor McCarthy noted, sometimes developers go overboard. And I feel like they, they definitely do that within Ward Two. But moving forward, I think this will provide a good opportunity for residents to have a bigger say in the communities that they want to live in and have a better understanding for all of us that sit up here and make those types of decisions about the community that our constituents want to live, to work in, and to raise a family in. So I appreciate Counselor Liang again for putting this forward.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I congratulate Counselor Liang for bringing this in. But one thing I think that needs to be added to this, and I know it's going to committee, I'm going to vote for it because I think it's a good thing, is not just reviewing the zoning and everything like that, but adjusting the zoning map. Because what happens is, and I'm agreeing with Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Andronico, it's the same thing. You, and I know a lot of my councilor-at-large colleagues have been at the meetings I've been at. And you get into these situations where it was pretty much a single-family, two-family area for the whole time. And somebody realized, hey, I'm, I'm Residence B. I can go up to six stories. And they're trying to shove something into a, to a postage stamp. So I think not only, and then you have other areas that were originally all industrial, and now they're all gone. And now there are people putting housing in there. And at first, it might have just been a single-family home, maybe a two-family home. Now all of a sudden, somebody's trying to throw in a six-story building, a seven-story building, saying it's industrial, revert all, if you look at the building code, they have lax thing. So I think there's a lot of older areas in Quincy that along with rewriting the zoning code, and I'm not sure how you would put it in this, but I, I think you also have to take a hard look at the zoning map. Because those are where the main battles are happening in the wards. Those are the neighborhoods that are getting the most affected. Those are the ones I find are the most controversial up there. So I think it would be important not only to review the zoning codes, and I support that and I always support that, but I think we also have to take a hard look at the zoning map. And we have to make some changes there. Because I can even go back to 1988 when we were first one on the council. I remember businesses that just aren't there anymore. Now there's condos or there's, there's homes have gone into those business areas. Or the local variety store is now, now like a, a two-unit condo or something. But developers go around and see that and they can say, okay, boom, I want to put up this monstrosity. And then you're in the big fight, well, it just doesn't fit in the neighborhood. And it doesn't. But yet, they have the zoning map. They have it on the thing. So I think not only, and I completely support the review of the zoning code, but I think along with it, we also need to take a look at the zoning map and the way these districts are. And, you know, I don't know if I could offer it as a, as a friendly amendment, you know, where it says the, therefore, we also, you know, therefore, be further resolved that we also do a rewrite of the zoning map. Because that's what people are working off of. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. To my colleague, I think that's a great idea. I think it's more thorough and more direct than the way I wrote it. And so I, my sort of suggestion to your friendly amendment, if that's okay, is just adding and maps everywhere where it says zoning code. So for example, it'll say, you know, whereas, the last whereas in there was as, no, I'm sorry, the first therefore be resolved. And it's a, it ends with a citywide review of our existing zoning codes. It's add and maps, right? And then the following therefore, everywhere it says zoning codes, like updating our existing zoning codes and maps, right?
Yes.
So is that okay with you, just adding and maps in there?
That sounds great.
So every time we mention that we're doing this to review and maybe change zoning codes, it's and the maps.
And the maps.
And that's more inclusive. Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion.
Even if you change the, the codes and make them more stricter, if that doesn't apply to that section of map, which is no longer industrial, commercial area anymore, it's a residential area now.
Yeah. No, I think that's a really clear clarification that we needed. So thank you. Yep.
Counselor, full support. Do you like to make that motion on the amendment to amend the-
Yes. So I'd like to, I guess, amend my motion to vote to approve it, the amended version-
Yeah.
As well as put it into ordinance committee.
Okay. Do I have a second for the amendment, seconded by Counsel McCarthy?
I'm sorry, for the amendment? Or can I just pass it with the amendment?
Do we have to put it in?
That way we don't have to take two votes.
You should vote on the amendment first.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
So we have a seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on the amendment first? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members. That amendment carries. Now we go back to the original motion. Are you done, Counsel?
I'm done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Phelan. I'd like to recognize Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate this being proposed. And I know Counselor Liang has worked very hard over the past few years trying to find solutions to a residential offset or tax offset for our residents of the city. I just want to be clear that this, you know, it's a, it's a very difficult calculation and, and we're in a precarious real estate market situation. I think that the exercise of going through the zoning codes is, is very well worth it, considering we haven't done a comprehensive one in a number of years. Has anyone, and I'm asking any of my colleagues, I guess, and I probably would be directing this at you, who's been most on top of it, do we have a, a number, you know, that we're shooting for in terms of development needed that would support this residential tax exemption? And that would probably be from commercial development, right? So what, you know, how much development is, is necessary to yield the tax benefits for the city that would offset this residential tax?
Exemption?
Yeah.
I don't have an exact number. We could technically do it now, but it would require residents to pay a higher tax rate, right? So it's not a matter of like, can we do it? It's, I think, I'm just teasing out your question, right? It's a matter of, at what point does it benefit residents to not have to pay that higher rate? And that always fluctuates based off of the assessed values of the homes, right? And so instead of, I think for me, trying to hone in on that number and working towards that number, it's more of like, well, in general, an increase in commercial development will move us closer to that end.
Right.
And on top of that, I think with the feedback I've gotten from residents about comments with, you know, again, like just this development is coming up here in this area, in this neighborhood, and it's really dense, and what are we really doing here? And just the time that has passed since we've had a citywide sort of like one clear vision of what we're doing. All of those things combined is what drove me to this. So there's no answer to your question that I have, but I hope it's clear just to understand that that's something I'm driving towards. And here are some other benefits that I see from it.
Yeah. It would be great to be able to understand what we would need, you know, what's the goal for development because then we can work back. Because the onesie-twosies on a postage stamp are not going to get us there. And so, you know, I just don't, I, I hate this discussion because I think it, it leads people to believe that it's going to happen. And I would rather temper those sentiments out there, that this is a nice exercise, but I wouldn't count on it, especially given the fact that over the past three years, we have seen dramatic shifts in work and office. And, you know, Counselor Mahoney even just mentioned layoffs. The market isn't that good. The market might be better because there are layoffs taking place and that affects public companies a little bit better. But generally speaking, you know, people aren't building office. They're looking for residential, especially in Massachusetts where nobody's building single-family homes. They're building, you know, apartments and condos to suffice the supply constraints. So, you know, again, very worthwhile exercise, but I just want to temper it with, we would most likely need some sort of crazy industrial, commercial development that I'd love to see. But, you know, let's just, let's be realistic about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, thank you.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Counselor Liang, for bringing this forward. Don't worry, we're going to get that in the Ross parking lot. So we'll get some of that going eventually. So one of the things- So one of the things I just wanted to follow up on was what Counsel Phelan was talking about. And I really do appreciate the fact that we haven't, I thought we had a comprehensive study back in 2011, so far be it for me to believe that it was 1970. So that's a piece you educated me for tonight. So we should be having something like this done every 10 years. So we should be looking at, especially with the amount of development and the amount of increase in population in the city of Quincy. If it slows down, you can slow down the need for it, but we should be looking at this constantly. And the fact that a lot of this stuff has changed, so I do believe that we have to add those maps. I agree, we did that in the amendment, but I appreciate that. But the other thing that we have to make sure we're doing is enforcing the zoning that we have. So although we can do things in Residential B, we are having variances that are just being approved at a 95% rate. And it's not because, it's not because it's good development, it's because they're being, they're being handpicked. And I just think it's really, really important that we also focus on the fact that, while we're looking at having this rezoning done, that we're also focusing on the fact that we have to enforce the zoning that we do have. Otherwise, there's no point in doing any of this. Because if you're going to have zoning rules and you're not going to enforce them, then it doesn't make sense. And what we have seen, and I think Counsel Phelan can also agree with me, is you're seeing neighborhoods actually organized together and hiring attorneys and coming into ZBA, and it's turning into quite an unnecessary, uncomfortable situation where neighbors are not being heard. And nobody's saying that they don't want development, but what they're saying is, we can't have these over-gigantic developments that are happening. So that's part of the reasons why I think we do have to have this zoning taken a look at. And, you know, at the same time, we will get there at some point to a residential tax break. It will happen, I truly do believe that it will happen. It may not happen next year, but it will happen in the future, I believe, in the city of Quincy with the growth that we're having. Thank you very much.
You want to, I'd like to recognize Counsel Devine first, and we'll go back if anybody else, okay?
Thank you very much.
I wanted to thank Counsel Liang, it's a great idea. I think a lot of our constituents in Ward Four would be happy to be hearing this because they've had a few things that they've had to take, and they're not, they haven't been very happy about a lot of them. And we have a lot of spaces that I think were probably affected most. There's even a property that's possibly up for sale, it hasn't been sold since 1920, and a bunch of constituents are very nervous because it's almost a full acre of land, and it's in an area that they're already banding together, and it hasn't even been sold yet. So it's a very true sentiment to how people are feeling. So thank you for bringing this up, and Counsel Phelan also for bringing in the zoning and all that. Because I think it's very close to everybody in Ward Four. Thank you very much.
Before we, to other counselors that have already spoken, this is an important discussion and topic, and I know this is going to committee, but I'm very happy that all the counselors are getting involved in this topic of conversation. Because I've been a counselor-at-large now for eight years, and in the last year, I've seen more people at the Zoning Board of Appeals than I've ever seen in all the years. So this is a great discussion to have. I know Counsel McCarthy had brought in a rezoning some, a couple, in the last two years, and we're tailoring up with Counsel Liang right now with a topic of conversation with this going through across the city. We're obviously a city, and we're growing, but we also have pockets of neighborhoods that we have to keep the aesthetics and the harmony of those particular neighborhoods. Especially the biggest thing that's going right now is the commercial base is now no longer there, and now they're trying to convert a commercial to a residential. And if sometimes, when it's not a mixed use, where there's no type of retail or commercial being put back into that property, the folks frown upon that, that you're just packing it in. So it's something that we need to go further into discussion with, have this conversation with planning, have this conversation with other stakeholders throughout the city that want to save their businesses, but at the same time, grow. If there's one thing I do not like, and I know we retired Jay Duka, is the blight properties out there in the city. Those have to be revitalized. And an exclusionary area is this downtown. We've revitalized a lot of the downtown, which we step outside here, but we've kept the parks, we've kept the open space the best we could around these properties. This is an exclusionary area, but when we get into the, some of the other areas that we see down in ZBA, that we see the topics down in Zoning Board of Appeals, you're getting a lot more citizens and residents coming in there and speaking against those type of proposals. So I think this is a step in the right direction. I'm happy it's out here for a discussion tonight. I allow the discussion to continue because, even though it's going into committee, because maybe there's two or three times we need to talk about this, another bite at the apple. And with that, I'll open it back up to any of the counselors that want to talk about. Counsel Liang, go right ahead.
Really quickly, before it goes to a vote, just sort of express my gratitude and just say that this is exactly what I was looking for, right? Is that, you know, when it comes to this discussion, it really brings to, I think, the floor an opportunity for all of us to, again, think of how this impacts really everything that we are working on in the city, right? We're talking about environmental changes, and traffic changes, and congestion, and pedestrian safety, and bike lanes, and, again, affordable units, and where that density is going to be, and the protection of like, you know, smaller, single, or like two-family home areas. And then to Counsel Andronico's point about being mindful about the fact that we do have to abide by the new state law with development or MBTA issues, right? And, you know, I don't pretend to know everything. My passion to this, right, does come from trying to increase our commercial tax base, but I, I'm also an at-large counselor. I lean heavily, and need to lean heavily, on my ward counselors because you all know your wards best, right, on what needs to happen in your wards, and then again, looking at how that impacts a bigger picture. And so I put all these things together and get very pie in the sky, and then folks like my colleague here will be like, well, let's be pragmatic about making this actually work. And so it's this big collective effort that cannot be done alone. And I'm just, I'm really grateful that my colleagues are so supportive, and also just frankly, like just offering their expertise in this conversation because we can't do this alone. And I'm really excited about the fact that we can all work together. I think that this collective up here is the right team to, as counselors, to put any potential new zoning forward to dictate future development. So, yeah, just want to say thank you, and I appreciate it. I'm really happy the dialogue is starting here tonight.
Any of the counselors? Seeing none, no, we have a motion made by Counsel Liang to put this in, for approval, and to put it into ordinance committee with the seeking a citywide review of existing zoning codes as amended. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members, unanimous vote to put it into ordinance and passage. Motion carries. Motion, Madam Clerk, please, the next item on the agenda, please.
Number four, 2023-031.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Harris.
Thank you, President Dubonah, and thank you, counselors. I'll be very, very quick as possible, it won't be long. I have some, obviously, if you've read the resolution that, in your packet, and seen some of the photos, I'm just going to run through it real quick. Obviously, seeing in front of you the CVS at 321 Quincy Shore Drive. Obviously, it's very important to the ward and the community and the city. They do great stuff, they have great employees there. But unfortunately, as we're talking, the previous item on the agenda tonight, we talk about situations where we have something that was put in place, promises were made, and we, they, it's been a long time since it's been put in. And we have all sorts of issues that since October, the photos that were taken were from October when I met with neighbors, and the city, other city officials, we just couldn't get them, get the CVS folks to do the right thing. These include, which has been in social media in the last few weeks, rodent infestation, which actually went from not only outside, but inside the building, poor dumpster maintenance, traffic circulation problems, which have been near misses, where there could have been some serious injuries in the parking lot and how the traffic flow is supposed to be maintained. And obviously, the neighbors that are around, Resident A neighbors that are around, there's a fence that's, that is just a disgrace for folks that, again, live in nice neighborhood, that it's not upkept. And I'm sure CVS has enough money to have been able to maintain this type of, this property much better. CVS has not responded to multiple requests to resolve these issues over months, phone calls, emails, directives from neighbors, and obviously, city officials. With this, I'm asking my colleagues that we order representatives from the CVS Corporation to appear before the Quincy City Council to address these complaints, answer to why they have not been resolved, and provide a clear plan to ensure these matters are resolved. I want to thank, in your packet, Representative, a letter from Representative Ayers, who was, has always been great to Ward Six, and I know, and all of his constituents throughout, throughout his Norfolk district. And I just want to just quote a little bit of what he said. "The conditions of CVS has grown steadily worse, which corporate management has deliberately ignored. All these issues, as stated in the resolution, create unacceptable health and safety hazards, and it is paramount that they are addressed. When this location was originally permitted, CVS agreed wholeheartedly to properly and professionally maintain their property in a way that would positively reflect on the community. They have failed to do so, and their neighbors deserve better. CVS should stand by their original intent in good faith and be a good neighbor. I look forward to the council's passage of this resolution and the appearance of the CVS officials before us, before you." Signed, Bruce Ayers, State Representative. So real quickly, here, if you're driving and you're at the light at Quincy Shore Drive in East Quanum Street, there's one of two dumpsters, as you can see. If you drive by there tomorrow, you'll see the same thing. Next, same dumpster, wide open, gates open, no, nobody's paying attention to what's supposed to be taking place. Again, the same, this is not, it looks like the same dumpster, but it's not. It's in the rear on Hummock Street, on the corner, on, just coming off of Hummock Street and East Quanum Street. As you can see, they don't, obviously, they don't care what it looks like. The fences are broken, it's been hit by, you know, numerous trucks. It's just, it's just ridiculous. That's another look of that rear dumpster. So the two dumpsters, as you can see, not being taken care of. Going forward, now, this is the beginning of the fence that starts. Now, this is a very, very long fence that goes through from, this is from Hummock Street, and it'll go and circle around all the houses. I believe it's on Hummock Street down and onto, again, Quincy Shore Drive. If you look in the ground, if you look at the shaded areas, those are burrows. Those are burrows that those neighbors behind have to deal with. And it's, it's just, it's just a disgrace. This is, this is the, I'll go back to number eight. Again, here's another burrow up close, as I was going further. Oh, there's my friend. Everybody knows this guy. And that person was there. And you can see even a bigger burrow right there, which was, and I'm just walking with the neighbors, going down, taking the photographs. So now I'm going to talk about the fence. So the neighbor, that's the corner, that neighbor is on Quincy Shore Drive. And so they decided to put up their own fence because they were tired of dealing with the fence that was, that's owned by CVS from falling into their yard and looking horrible. Next one, we go now, here's the end, here's the mix and match of how are we going to fix it? Oh, we'll put a board here, a board there, you know, it's ridiculous. This is just absolutely absurd. As you can see, you know, it wouldn't stop any, obviously, to stop rodents, especially on the waterfront, is very difficult. But with the dumpsters being open, it's just, again, you can see a well-maintained home behind it having to deal with this type of situation. Hey, how's that? That's going to stop somebody from going through, right? So, yeah, as you can see, even the grass, you know, there's no real sense of what it looks like. It is cut, but, you know, there's no lawn care, and they don't really care about what it looks like. Again, here's another example. Now here, this is, this is an island, this is where I get into, and I'm going to be pretty quick. Here's where we have some traffic issues. Now, that's Hummock Street, right there, where you turn into where the drive-through is. There, now, now it's a one-way situation, where it's not, there's not enough signage there. Actually, this should be removed because when there's snow, there's been multiple times where it's been hit, or cars have gone over it and actually been disabled. So as you can see, it's a one-way in, but at night, there's no lighting. There's a stop sign, as you can see, and the picture, I think, is hopefully better on your paper, but there's confusion there because you have folks that, A, they use it as a cut-through to get to East Quanum Street, and they cross in, go in, through, and it can become very dangerous with those, especially those high bushes, especially if they zip around the corner, especially if you have people walking. And that's where the drive-through comes out. And the sign is just, isn't there. And as you can see, it's, the lines, everything, it's not been maintained. And the number of burrows I saw behind those green, the green was ridiculous. What those folks are dealing with is 100, 110% unacceptable. And this even tells you, it says one way, but why is the stop sign saying stop? You know what I mean? When you're not supposed to go out that way. So, you know, it's kind of, it is kind of ridiculous. You can see, that's a perfect picture of, you know, between the dumpster, a sign that says stop, where you're not even supposed to be going that direction. It's really, it's not being, it's not being watched, it's not being maintained. And I want to thank the council. I came before you before, and we do make a difference, and things coming up here does make a difference. Although it isn't the final result I was looking for, if we can pass this, it would be, I think it would be a good thing. The company I worked for, we used to call it The Brand, where if I was, if that was my post office, I would, I would be carrying, as the manager, I'd be carrying mail the next day. If I didn't take care, if there was one piece of social media that was wrong that came out, I wouldn't be the manager of a facility anymore. So I just wrote that down, it popped in my head, you know, there's nobody, there's nobody watching the store, except for the workers that are working hard there. So what we achieved, though, I want to show you with a similar that we did earlier, and I want to thank folks, is if you remember, I came before you with this, that's on the screen right now, the building that we stopped, we stopped, we put a halt and a freeze on things taking place. Well, that's what it looked like, and this is what it looks like today. 100% different because we made people hear us, because we were listening to the people that represent us. And that's what matters. And if you see on the side, this is another view, where you can see the piping and how it looked. This is what it looks like now. So I want to, from some of the folks that I represent... So I want to, from some of the folks that, that I represent, said to pass on, to thank folks for when we did this. Now, am I still happy about what's up there? I'm not. And I still think we need to have that at one point inspected, once, once it's ready to rock and roll, but we at least achieved that. And this is what I'm looking to achieve through this resolution with your help. Again, and let's square CVS away. I feel that, you know, bringing, bringing bad neighbors, corporations, folks that are making money, while we talked tonight about, and we, from the start, from father bills, folks that are struggling to be able to, to make ends meet and pay their bills, and folks that are, we're looking to give folks tax exemptions and breaks in our zoning. And we have people that are making money that, that, you know, plenty of money, and they're not doing the right thing by our neighbors that, and our constituents that are working hard. I thank you for indulging me again, and I'd like to, if I could, ask this to go to, to Environment and Public Health Committee and Ordinance.
Yeah, no, I'm glad Counsel Harris brought this up. I have my own pet peeve with CVS on Southern Autery. It's just the same as Counsel Harris. Maybe not as bad traffic problems, but the dumpster, the debris in the back, I've had inspectional services down on Southern Autery numerous times to try to get them to fence it in, to move it, and they've kind of blown us off. So that's that area that the administration and Dave Murphy and Natural Resources have cleaned up, that park area. And they went in, and again, it's cleaner greener coming up again, and we send people in there, they pick it all up, and it fills up with debris from CVS, and no one's responding. So it does make for a blighted situation down there at the Southern Tide Mill that's an area that we're trying to clean up. I'd love to have CVS talk a little bit in front of us about, about that location. I'd love to have Stop and Shop here, too. If anybody goes on Southern Autery in Stop and Shop, there's plenty of debris all over the, all over each side of Stop and Shop that I've had inspectional services over there, too. And like Counsel Harris says, you know, your big corporations come in, they make a lot of money, they do it once, and then they let it go for a number of years, and you have to fight with them. And I know we'll keep battling with them and send in inspectional services to wherever, but both locations are a disgrace when it comes to, to rubbish. So thank you.
So Counsel Harris, go right ahead.
I'd like to amend my, and to add the location that they have to speak to about as well, the, on Southern Autery.
On the amendment to add the Southern Autery CVS, do I have a second on the amendment? I have a second by Counsel Liang. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? Okay, we'll put that in there as the amendment to this.
Thank you.
So Southern Autery CVS will be added to this resolve. So back to the original motion, motion made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Adronico. Is that right? Yep. Any discussion on this as well? Just a question for you, for you guys. Have you ever reached out to the field manager, the person who's in the maintenance above the general manager on these CVSs?
Well, obviously, the neighbors, everybody has reached out to CVS up the line. As far as the names and the individuals, President Dubonah, we don't, but they've all been talked to.
Sure.
You know what I mean? If they, again, it's, I don't, I don't know what to say.
I can remember a few years ago in this, this chamber, that we subpoenaed Amashi Shaw from the United States Steel Workers National Grid, you know, the gas, gas workers, to come into this, this hall, this chambers, and within a few days, that lockout was lifted. So maybe we have to pull that out of our toolbox. It's, it's an option to subpoena.
Well, that's, well, that's exactly what basically we're doing here, President Dubonah. And, and as I showed, it does make a difference bringing certain places into the limelight. And if they won't, I mean, again, maybe CVS don't care if they have a bad reputation or not, but I know that there are other companies that wouldn't want that to take place. At least we're bringing it out, we're talking about, and we're going to bring them up, we're going to bring them here in front of, in front of those committees, yes.
All right.
I already spoke with, I had some great help from Jen today, and I don't know, we'll work on sending, right? Jen's going to send the letter out, and if this is passed, and I want to thank Jen, I want to thank the administration, all the departments, my friend Gail, who took some pictures for me, and, and everybody here that's always supported me. Thank you.
So with that, we have a motion made by Counsel Harris and seconded by Counsel Adronico, and as amended with Southern Autery in it. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members unanimous vote for passage, for approval into Environmental, Public Health, and Oversight Committees. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, do we have any more agenda items?
That concludes this evening's agenda.
All right. Approval of previous minute, meeting minutes of March 6, 2023. Motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Adronico. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. That is a vote. Communication reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Moving on to unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Moving on, reports of committees. I'd like to recognize Counsel Phelan.
Through you, Mr. President. Speaking with EPW Commissioner Al Grazio, so earlier, we're looking to do the thing on the C Walls at the first meeting in April.
Okay, so the first meeting in April, April 3.
Yes.
Okay. We have that, that's going to be scheduling committees, but we can do that now, I'll allow that, so everybody knows.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
All right. Sorry, jumped the gun.
That's okay. Reports of committees, but we'll actually fine-tune that in a minute. Is okay?
Okay, sure thing.
Reports of committees, we're still on this one. So Counsel McCarthy, we'll go with you first.
Yeah, I have some ordinance committee items I'd like to pass. Ward three, 2023-019, remove HP loading zone at 316 Farrington Street.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy.
Motion.
Seconded by Counsel Kane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I have to do a roll call on this, okay? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item.
Another item in Ward three, 2023-020, add handicap parking at 316 Farrington Street. Form of motion.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Kane. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda.
Ward four, Counsel Devine, 2023-021, add stop sign on Grove Street at Forest Ave.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
2023, also Ward four, 2023-022, add 15-minute parking at 371 Granite Street and 372 Granite Street. Form of motion.
Motion made by, to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members affirmative, and the motion carries. Any more items?
Ward five, 2023-023, add always stop sign Beach Street at Rossin Road.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
2023-024, add stop sign on Roberts Lane at Dickens Street. Form of motion.
That's another form of motion. A motion made, to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
One more, 2023-025, in Ward five, add stop sign on Lafayette Street at Putnam Street. Form of motion.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. That completes with Counsel McCarthy. Thank you. Counselor, I'd like to recognize Counsel Harris.
Yes, thank you. Earlier this evening, public hearings were held for Counsel orders 2023-010, utility grant location, National Grid Center Street and Garfield Street. Positive recommendation from Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Devine. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubonah.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
We also had 2023-001, grant of location Comcast 147 C Avenue. We're going to hold this until next meeting to get some further answers for the gentleman that, and through Counsel McCarthy to make, and we'll bring it up next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. And that's it.
Any other reports of committees than counsel members? Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. I'd like to recognize Counsel Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this Thursday, beginning at dusk, is going to be the celebration of Ramadan for a month. We have a really robust Muslim community here in Quincy, and so I just wanted to, on behalf of the council, wish them and anyone else celebrating Ramadan for the next month a joyous and celebratory celebration. So yeah, I'm repeating all the words tonight, but yes, Happy Ramadan. Thank you.
Any of the counselors? Moving on, motions, orders, and resolutions. Okay, scheduling committee meetings and public hearings. Back to Counsel Phelan.
Oh, yes. I'd like to put on for the Finance Committee meeting for the items for C Walls that we're in, and there'll be a presentation. It's 2020, it's, the order number is 2023-17.